Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Please rise for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag salute.
Yes, please join me in a moment of reflection. We come together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as a diverse community. A community from backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures. Yet one common goal that is the betterment of this city. We come together tonight to seek guidance, wisdom, and discernment during deliberations that transpire this evening. In doing so, we lift up Councilmember Joe Garcia, Councilmember Christian Garcia, Deputy Mayor Martinez, and Mayor White. May they be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. Amen.
Thank you all. This meeting is called to order, and we'll do a quick roll call. Councilmember Fitzgerald is absent tonight. Councilman Christian Garcia?
Here.
Councilman Joe Garcia?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
Present.
And I, Mayor White, am here. We'll move on to proclamations, and this week we have the Economic Development Week, and I would like to invite anybody here from Economic Development to join me at the podium. All right. Economic Development staff are the ones I get to spend the most time with, doing business visits, our subcommittee, and I feel like this is where a lot of our work gets done. So, thank you all for your hard work. And with that, whereas the International Economic Development Council established Economic Development Week in 2016 to recognize the vital role of economic developers in building strong, resilient communities, and whereas the city of Escondido is committed to fostering an environment that supports key industries, encourages innovation, and creates job opportunities for our community; and whereas the city of Escondido's Economic Development Department plays a crucial role in attracting and supporting businesses, cultivating an environment where enterprises thrive, and driving innovation to enhance the local economy. And now therefore, I, Dane White, Mayor of the city of Escondido, do hereby proclaim May 12 through 16, 2025, as Economic Development Week and encourage all residents to recognize and participate in activities that promote economic growth and development in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council members, and community members. My name is Jennifer Schenick. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the city of Escondido, and I'm joined by my incredible colleagues in the department: Kristin Ugrab, Sandra Aguilar, Pedro Cardenas, and Francisco Vargas. Thank you for your continued support and for proclaiming this week as Economic Development Week in the city of Escondido. Our Economic Development team is proud to serve the more than 10,000 businesses permitted to operate in our city. These businesses, large and small, form the backbone of our community, providing more than 47,000 local jobs and generating more than $44 million in annual sales tax revenue. Critical funding from our business community helps support the quality of life we all enjoy, including public safety services, parks, open space, recreation programs, and public art. Over 85% of our businesses have fewer than 10 employees. These small businesses are the heart of Escondido, and we are committed to helping them thrive alongside our larger employers who continue to bring innovation and opportunity to the region. Economic development is a team effort. We work closely with every city department to roll out the red carpet, not red tape, for our businesses. Whether it's through process improvements, streamlining permitting, or customer service, we strive to create a welcoming, business-friendly environment. We also leverage new technology tools and aim for continuous improvement to better serve our business community. Tonight, we especially want to thank the businesses that continue to invest in and believe in Escondido. From the small businesses along Grand Avenue who persevered through road and sidewalk construction to companies in our Research and Technology Center, supporting and developing groundbreaking innovations. We see you, and we appreciate you. Thank you, City Council, for your leadership and support in making Escondido a place where businesses and residents can succeed together. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Tonight, items 1 through 6 and 8 through 9 are in consent. Item 7 has been polled by staff to be presented as a regular item. I will move to approve 1 through 6 and 8 through 9 and ask for a second.
Now, Mr. Mayor, just prior to voting, was there anything from closed session report?
Oh.
I'm so sorry.
And public comments, I guess?
I missed that too, but there is no public report.
Let's do this vote and we'll go back real quick.
Perfect. Sounds great. All right, one moment. Let me just get the voting open for you. All right, voting is open. Motion approved, 5-0. Or 4-0, my apologies. Councilman Fitzgerald absent.
Did we have a report at a closed session?
No public report. Thank you, Mayor.
Public comments?
We do have one public comment. Luis?
Yeah, hi, my name is Luis, and I just want to speak about like what's going on with the homeless people. Currently, I'm homeless. I try to ask for help. The city doesn't provide any help for the homeless people. I had other counties offer me help, so it's like, how is another county going to offer me help when you guys? I live right here, you know? I've been living here since I was five years old, and I asked multiple times for help. There's no city programs specifically from the city to help out the homeless. As for shelter, we don't have none. For food, you can only go once a day to certain nonprofits. So, why is the city not helping the homeless people? Every other city has a program for the homeless people, but why not this one? Why? Because I paid 13 years. I worked 13 years straight, paying my taxes, doing everything right. I found hard times, there's no help. I just wanted to speak on that because I want to know what's going on, you know? I've been sleeping in the rain. I've gotten days without eating until I got EBT. But where's the city at? Doesn't the city care for its residents? And that's all I have to say.
No further public comments on this item.
Okay, that brings us to item 7, which is the 2024 General Plan Annual Progress Report. Thank you, and the time is yours.
Alrighty, good evening, City Council. Thank you so much for having me tonight and this evening. My name is Priscilla Valdón, and I'm here to present on the 2024 General Plan Annual Progress Report. Since 1965, California state law has required cities and counties to provide implementation progress on the general plan. And every year, staff have prepared an annual progress report, or APR, to touch on the accomplishments and milestones that staff have achieved in the calendar year. This item is purely informational, and the only request before staff is just to receive and file this presentation. So, before we jump right in, I do want to start off with a bit of background. What is the general plan? And that's the question. The general plan is the city's guiding document for the city and how the city will grow and meet the needs of its residents. It guides decisions about land use, transportation, safety, and so much more through policies and high-level goals. These policies and goals shape everyday decision-makers for staff and decision-makers, like I said. And the general plan, it helps answer questions like, where does Escondido plan to build homes, businesses, and offices? How much does Escondido value active transportation, like biking and walking? And how does Escondido prepare for hazards like fires? The general plan acts like a compass, and it sets direction for the city's decisions. The general plan is part of a series of three annual progress reports. And annual progress reports, or APRs, are moments of reflection for staff and decision-makers in the public. And that is to assess goals as well as direction. Earlier this year, I came before you to present on the Housing Element APR, which touches on the city's progress towards meeting the regional housing needs allocation and the city's objectives for housing. Today, staff will be presenting on the General Plan APR, which touches on some of the keynote milestones that they have achieved for the calendar year. And later this year, staff will provide the Climate Action Plan APR, which will touch on some of the progress made towards our climate goals. With the exception of the Housing Element APR, there are no repercussions set by state law in case city staff present on the APR late after the April 1 deadline. So, staff came before the City Council back in 2023, on August 7, to present on the General Plan APR. This year, we're doing it a lot sooner, and after staff present the General Plan APR, the APR will be available online. So, according to the state, there is no standardized form or format for how the General Plan APR needs to be. However, the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation does recommend that cities stick to the APR's initial intent, which is to summarize the activities associated with the general plan's elements. There are a total of seven elements that are required by state law, and at the city, we use different naming conventions, which you can see on your screen. The city of Escondido also has three optional chapters, which focus on more localized programming and policies to improve the quality of life of Escondido's residents. So, as part of this presentation, I will not be talking about every single general plan element, but I will be covering some notable achievements. So, starting with housing. In 2024, the city reported additional progress towards meeting its regional housing needs allocation by reaching 23% of its above moderate income housing, 3% of moderate income, 12% of low income, and 8% of very low income. If you recall from my presentation several weeks ago, developments like the Quince Senior Apartments, the Vermont Apartments, as well as a 32-unit development on the intersection of Quince and Grand helped contribute to this progress. Some major developments you may see beginning construction or under construction around town include the Palomar Heights development right down the street, the Quince Street Senior Apartments across the Escondido Transit Center, the 555 Grand Development across the street from Swami's, and also the Northeast Gateway Development by Mayflower Dog Park right below Dixon Lake. In terms of transportation and capital improvements, in 2024, staff continued updates to the mobility and infrastructure element of the general plan through the Comprehensive Active Transportation Strategy, or CATS. Staff worked on a total of 24 capital improvement projects, including the refencing of a softball field in Kit Carson Park. Staff conducted extensive outreach in anticipation of construction associated with the Escondido Creek Trail improvements. And Grand Avenue Phase 2 began construction, which included the widening of sidewalks as well as streetscape improvements. By the end of 2024, the Citrocado Parkway Extension was nearly 99% complete in terms of construction, and the roadway was finally open to the public. In terms of community services, there are many recreational opportunities for Escondido residents. There were over 15,000 participants that played soccer tournaments, over 1,000 students that received before and after-school programming. There were a little over 99,000 calls for service and over 2,000 code compliance inspections. Additionally, the library had over 200,000 visits and over 1,000 programs that were offered. And another notable achievement that occurred was the completion of the planning and design for the library's redevelopment. In 2025, construction is set to begin, and services will begin to be provided at a satellite location, which is the North County Mall between now and spring of 2026. And so, as far as next steps, staff will submit this annual progress report to the San Diego Association of Governments, or Sandec, as well as the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation. The APR will also be available on the city's website. And that concludes staff's presentation, and we welcome any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on the item?
None.
Okay. My only comment is thank you for the update and the presentation.
Quick comment. This just shows that we have a lot. We've been doing a lot of good work, a lot of good work's been done by our staff, and I'm excited to see where it goes, and thank you for everything that you all do. Thank you.
Thank you for the information and the update. Quick question on the, you mentioned in the next step slide that you're sending this to Sandec. Can we go back to the slide that has, it talks about the mobility? There it is. The CATS. Yeah, that one. No, that one more. There you go. Yeah, so you mentioned that you're going to send next steps to Sandec as well as the Climate Innovation Office for Governor, the state governor. Is that something we normally do? Is that required for all General Plan members? Or is it that because we received a grant from that office?
It is regularly required for staff to provide the General Plan Annual Progress Report to the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation. Believe we send the APR to Sandec for courtesy. It helps them just plan at a regional level.
No, I appreciate that. And then, just something neat here for those that can see in the slide. I don't know if this is from the Sandec tool or from our own consultant that we use to do the, our own active transportation and mobility planning. But I remember Sandec at one point had a tool online where residents from all over the county could go in and identify place and put pins in locations where there was speeding, where there needed to be traffic signals, where there was a lot of accidents, near misses, all those kind of things. And it kind of populated in areas like this. So, I just want to say that that was a really great tool, and it's awesome because it tells you, it was done in real time, so you could go to one location and see how many people complained about the same thing, so that you knew that there was documentation of a problem. So, I just want to say that I appreciate those kind of tools. I appreciate that we're sending this to Sandec even as a courtesy, because I think regionally, we do need to share information and help each other out in addressing, you know, these traffic and transportation issues. And so, I just want to say I appreciate that, and I want to recognize that there's efforts regionally in tracking all these and really helping our cities. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. Can you go to the page that had the amount of service calls? There we go. One of the things that I'm really enjoying that I think is really important is the summary of all that's, well, not everything going on, but a lot of what's going on. And we're talking almost 100,000 calls of service among a lot of the other work that's being done. So, that's a shout-out to our first responders and many of the other departments that work regarding these service calls, because that is a lot of calls to do. And we can see movement around town, but unless we get a comprehensive number like this, we don't realize how much is going on. So, thank you very much for the summary. I think it just goes to show how much staff is putting in to keep our community safe and working and getting things that need to be accomplished. Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, thank you, and we'll receive and file.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 10, which is the Considerate Uncodified Ordinance Adopting the State of California Fire Hazard Severity Zone Map Pursuant to Government Code 51179.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. I am Levana Kretke, Deputy Fire Marshal with the Escondido Fire Department, and I will be presenting on the recommended adoption of the Fire Hazard Severity Map. Thank you. The Office of the State Fire Marshal released updated Fire Hazard Severity Zone Maps for Local Responsibility Areas, or LRA, for the purpose of identifying the fire hazard severity zones within our area. The last update was done in 2009, and previously only identified the very high fire severity areas. The comparison maps show the previously adopted map from 2009 and the 2025 map being recommended this evening. This update includes two additional hazard tiers, which now include moderate, high, and very high fire hazard severity levels. These hazard maps are being updated to more accurately reflect the zones within the LRA that are susceptible to wildfire. The hazard mapping process incorporates new science in local climate data and improved fire assessment modeling to determine these hazard ratings. As recommended by the government code, a local agency shall designate by ordinance moderate, high, and very high fire hazard severity zones in its jurisdiction within 120 days of receiving these recommendations from the state fire marshal. Additionally, these maps shall be made available to the public for viewing and comment. These maps were made available to the public in March of this year, 2025, and we have since received 11 comments, which are available in your staff's staff report for viewing. The Fire Hazard Severity Map evaluates hazard, not risk. Hazard is based on the physical conditions that create a likelihood and expected behavior over 30- to 50-year period without considering mitigation measures, such as home hardening, recent wildfire, or fuel reduction efforts. Risk is the conditions, sorry, excuse me. Risk is the potential damage a fire can do to the area under existing conditions, accounting for any modifications such as fuel reduction projects, defensible space, and ignition-resistant building construction. CAL FIRE scientists and wildfire mitigation experts developed the maps using a science-based and field-tested model that assigns a hazard score based on the factors that influence fire likelihood and fire behavior. The Fire Hazard Severity Model for wildland fire have two key elements: probability of an area burning and expected fire behavior under extreme fuel and weather conditions. The zones reflect, reflected areas have similar burn probabilities and fire behavior characteristics. The factors considered in determining fire hazard within wildland areas are fire history, flame length, terrain, local weather, and potential fuel over the 50-year period. Outside of the wildland area, the model considers factors that might lead to buildings being threatened, including terrain, weather, urban vegetation cover, blowing embers, proximity to wildland, and fire history. In the very high and high fire hazard severity areas, this map will guide the city development standards and increase requirements for new buildings to have fire-resistant features, as well as require property sellers to disclose the property designation in real estate transactions. Additionally, in the very high fire hazard severity zone, new buildings will require a 100-foot defensible space or buffer zone between them and the surrounding areas. Staff recommends that City Council approve ordinance 2025-03 adopting the Fire Hazard Severity Zone Map. This concludes my presentation.
Do we have any public comments on this item?
None.
None? Okay. I just have a couple of questions. There were five public comments submitted to us today about not having street names on the streets of the map. Is this even our map, or is this a map provided by the state?
This is a map that's provided by the state. We had similar comments. As part of the comments we got, I can bring up the map and show you, but you do have to put in an address to be able to drill down and see the actual streets.
Okay, and I figured as much. Okay, I want to just read you one of the other public comments we received. Basically, she says she would push back on the map where it skirts a property and barely puts it into a category. And my question is, do we have flexibility to determine where those lines go? Or is that just based upon what the state tells us?
We do have to go with what the state tells us based on the government code.
I had assumed that's what the answer would be. Okay, that concludes my questions. Thank you. Thank you for your time and presentation. I'll open it up to the rest of the council.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Would you be able to show us the map that you just spoke of?
Absolutely. One moment.
And then, would you be able to just kind of demonstrate how it works?
Yes.
Just for education of everybody.
So, I put in Fire Station 4's address, which is the Kit Carson Fire Station. So, I'm going to take it out of here, just so you guys can see it. Zoom in. So, you do actually have to type in the map, or, excuse me, type in the address into the map. And then, as you click it in, it will take you to zoom in. And then, you do have to be able to kind of navigate a little bit. So, I think that might be part of the challenge. But you can see it, it does have street names here, and you can actually move the map around as you drag through to see it as if different areas.
And can you zoom out as well, or is that possible?
Sure. Yeah. So, there's a zoom out and a zoom in.
Perfect. All right. Well, thank you so much for showing us that.
Sure.
That's it for me. Thank you again.
Thank you for the information. I had similar questions to the mayor. So, I think what, so you mentioned 11 comments that were in our staff report, but I didn't see 11 comments. Is there somewhere specifically I should be looking that maybe isn't obvious in the staff report?
Oh, Deputy Mayor Martinez, those were emailed as part of the packet earlier this afternoon.
Okay, the 11 comments that she mentioned?
Yeah. So, I sent you 10. One of the comments didn't have anything written in it, so I did not send that to you.
Oh, got it, got it. Okay. I wasn't sure, because then the mayor mentioned five comments, so I wasn't sure if that was separate. Okay. So, yeah, so based on the comments that I did receive earlier today, there was frustration about not seeing street names, but now we know this is a dynamic map, and it would probably, it's a, you know, we're a big city, so it would be hard to allegedly see the street names. But I think when we share, just for some food for thought for future, when we share things is to envision, and again, I don't know who it falls on, but just a suggestion. When we share things, kind of anticipating response of our constituents, right? So, sometimes we have to teach folks, you know, how to use tools that are really new and give examples. So, I think what my colleague, Councilmember Garcia, asked for us to get a demo, I think that's really helpful. So, if there's a way to share that in a social media post when we publish, because I did see when the Fire Department published those maps. So, I think that would be helpful. And then, I'm wondering if we would be able to, in response to the public comments, I don't know if that's, maybe we can be given as, on the City Council, a comment to reply, or if somebody can reply to those constituents would be very helpful on maybe explaining to them kind of how to navigate. And it looks like this map is state, so we're just kind of adopting what the state's giving us. But then, they have a comment period, which means, what are they doing with those comments? Are they taking them into consideration to possibly revise the map? So, I think for me, that's where I'm not clear, right? They're asking the community for input. So, what's the next step?
So, you're providing input, but it's based on scientific data. That is all that they're going to be doing. The only thing the state is looking at is if there was a significant variance in what the development pattern was. And the example given to me on the state wildfire mitigation is if we had a forested area that had been, since the picture had been developed, had been paved over, and it was a significant area of paving. So, there is, this is about identifying the hazard on historical data, likelihood of fire spread. So, the comments will be received, but it's based on that data analysis. So, there is no change. no change fundamentally happening from those assessments.
Got it. So, then it appears that the comments there to maybe see, oh, we missed something, or there's been a change since the maps were developed and the information gathered, that's, so is that what the state's looking for on that kind of commentary?
The state, the state will receive and file the comments.
Okay. Do you know if they're reviewing them and considering them? What's their methodology?
The state will receive and file the comments.
Yeah. Do we know anything else beyond that?
The state will receive and file the comments. That is the state, how the state is assessing this is a receive and file.
Okay.
If there is something of substance, as I said, that is a significant derivation, and it's about conditions on the ground, not placement of the space, and we have looked at our maps, there was not anything of significance in the derivation of the ground conditions.
Okay. And then, is CAL FIRE the agency that develops this, or who's like the responsible party at the state? Like, if I wanted to ask someone at the state and actually directly ask them a question, who, what department, who do I go to?
It is CAL FIRE.
It's the State Fire Marshal's office, actually.
Okay.
And just to respond to your comment about responding to each of those comments, I did reply, and I had some back and forth with a couple of people.
Oh, good.
And gave some direction and kind of walked through on how to better use the map.
Thank you.
Yes.
Great. Because I think that's the thing, is like, I can understand why it's confusing and why there's like an assumption of like, well, you're asking me for my comments, right? Because when residents are asked for comments, usually it's because it could result in a change or something. And so, if that's not the case here, then, you know, people should know that. And if the state just receives and files things, and I don't find that enough or satisfying, then I want to know who to talk to if I need to get more information, right? So, thank you for that. That's all my questions and comments for now.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Garcia.
Thank you. So, maps are going to be updated based on historical data. And thank you, by the way, thank you for responding to the constituents and having that interaction, because that was one thing that I was concerned about. How would that information be disseminated? So, thank you very much for that. But one of the things that is completely related and unrelated to this is the insurance challenges that the change of maps is going, or will provide to our constituents. In the Public Safety Committee that I'm a member of, for CAL Cities, it's a major discussion that's going on. It's the elephant in the room that no one is really, really talking about. At some point, I think that we need to, I don't know, maybe encourage the state not to just file and, right?
So, on the insurance question, these maps are not legally allowed for the insurance companies to use these to set rates. So, that's one of the common confusion points that's out there. A rate increase has actually predated these issuance of these maps. There are a lot of factors in that, and just yesterday, there was an additional escalation approved for State Farm in housing, another 17% increase from the state insurance commissioner. But that is, you're supposed to be able to request from your insurance provider a reason why rates have increased, and what is the basis of that. If there's concern, customers should go to the, citizens both within the city and outside of the city should go to the insurance commissioner's office to file a concern. But they're supposed to disclose to you the basis. These maps are not to be used in the basis, and the rate increases predated, the significant rate increases predated the issuance of the maps.
Wonderful. Thank you. I appreciate that clarity, so we can continue to inform our constituents regarding that, because this has been a major discussion on our committee, and no one actually knew that. So, thank you so much for that, and, well, I guess we will have to make a decision. Thank you.
Well, I would say the only thing to add is that these maps will now become the basis for us to look at issues, and there are basic requirements in building code that go with it. We've already, the council's already been out and visited to one of the communities that is being constructed with some of these things in mind. This Escondido is the first place to build to standards that help mitigate risk in these areas, which is, again, a different than the hazard. I think that's an important defining definition of what this is looking at. It's looking at the hazard over a 50-year period. And so, we'll be utilizing this, obviously, it'll become part of our building code. A lot of construction that happens to current building code, actually by definition, if you look at the results from fires, is more likely to survive some of those fire and some of those events that have happened. But we also start to get into a conversation about how we can look at those maps and what steps the local community can provide to create a safer environment long-term for our residents and those folks surrounding us.
Thank you.
And so, are we tonight, the recommendation is to approve the actual ordinance 2025-03? Yes?
Correct. And the second reading will happen at a later time.
I am just curious, so then what happens if the council chooses not to approve this ordinance?
You'll be in violation of state law.
Well, then, I move to approve ordinance number 2025-03, and I have a second from Councilwoman Christian Garcia.
Voting is open. Motion approved, 4-0.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item 11, which is the approval of the Escondido Police Department Military Equipment Report and Adoption of Ordinance 2025-02. I forgot to open the last public hearing, but we'll open this one.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council members. My name is Ryan Banks. I'm the interim Chief of Police for the Escondido Police Department. With me is Lisa Rodello, the Assistant Director of Police Support Services. Today, we will offer a presentation on the Escondido Police Department's Assembly Bill Number 481, Funding, Acquisition, and Use of Military Equipment. Next slide, please. Little bit of background on AB 481. On September 30th, 2021, Governor Gavin Newsom approved AB 481 to address the funding, acquisition, and use of military equipment. It requires the police department to seek council approval to fund, acquire, and use military equipment as defined in the law. Next slide, please. So, how does the Escondido Police Department adhere to AB 481? So, we establish a military equipment use policy, the requirements related to compliance, the acquisition and use costs, annual reporting, cataloging of the equipment, we compile complaints regarding these items, public transparency, and we have city council oversight. Next slide, please. So, how do we use this military equipment to help the community? The Escondido Police Department uses military equipment, and its mission to protect the community through exceptional police service. The equipment is acquired with careful consideration and intention. It is acquired and authorized when there is no reasonable alternative that can achieve officer and civilian safety. AB 481 provides important public information and input regarding how military equipment is funded, acquired, and used. Next slide, please. So, here's a little bit of what we have and we do not have. So, the Escondido Police Department has drones, a robotic platform, incident command vehicles, armored personnel carriers, breaching equipment, patrol and SWAT rifles, flashbangs, long-range acoustic device, 40-millimeter launchers, and chemical agents. What we do not have are MRAPs, Remind Resistant Ambush Protected Vehicles, Humvees, tracked armored vehicles, weaponized aircraft, vessels, or vehicles, firearms or ammunition of 50-caliber or greater, or firearms designed to launch explosive projectiles. Next slide, please. So, operationally, in 2024, the drones flew 211 missions totaling 53.83 hours. The robotic platform had zero uses, the incident command vehicle had approximately 13 uses, the armored personnel carrier had an average of six uses a month, the breaching equipment was used eight times, the patrol and SWAT rifles were used zero times, flashbangs were used zero times, the long-range acoustic device was used zero times, the 40-millimeter launcher had 17 uses, and there are additional six times where they were displayed but not used, and then the chemical agents, munitions had three uses. Next slide, please. So, here's going to be some footage. This footage was shot from a drone, so there was a shooting call that occurred in the 2300 block of South Escondido Boulevard on May 31st, 2024. The alleged suspect fled the area and was seen jumping a fence into the yard of a residential neighborhood off of 15th Avenue. The drone was deployed, located the alleged suspect, and this subject was seen crawling into an outdoor cabinet. The drone was able to stay up in the air, keep observation of that area to ensure that the subject didn't leave, and SWAT was called out for assertion apprehension. Right, so in this video, some time has passed, we were able to get resources into the area, ensure that the residents in the area were safe, make sure that we had good containment, and then begin the process of negotiation and successfully apprehending the subject. So, a little bit about how we adhere to AB 481. Each year, we're required to do some of the following actions. We publish an annual report 30 days prior to a public hearing. This year, on May 1st, we held a public and publicized meeting for the public to review. There were no members of the public in attendance. This policy, our policy is publicly available on the Escondido Police Department's website. The City Council annually reviews and approves the continued use of the equipment or authorized use of any newly sought-after equipment, and the City Council shall consider a proposed military equipment use policy as an agenda item for an open session of a regular meeting and provide for public comment in accordance with the Ralph &amp; Brown Act. Next slide, please. Some of the updates this year is the previously approved Saber Pepperball launchers were replaced with the Pepperball brand launchers that were superior for functionality. In 2024, the costs and projected costs for 2025 were for consumables such as ammunition or replacement of worn and damaged equipment. And then, in 2024, we received no complaints regarding AB 481 equipment. Next slide, please. So, for the final slide here, it is staff's recommendation to adopt ordinance number 2025-002 and approve the Escondido Police Department's Annual Military Equipment Report in accordance with state law requirements set forth in AB 481. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, one.
Just a quick comment. I have nothing against the police. It's good that, you know, they're doing their job and stuff like that, but before they get funded for stuff like that, did you train the officers a little bit better? Not the ones out here, but the ones in the police station. Last year, I went to do a police report, because my family was doing some stuff. The only thing that happened was that the lady in the front desk, she was screaming at me. She told me she was not going to give me surveys. So, how does that work if they're supposed to help other community, but they don't want to help other community? And that's all.
No further public comments on this item.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I just have, well, first off, thank you for your time and for the presentation. I've just got a couple of simple questions. Is it normal for nobody to show up to the public hearing that you guys had?
We have not had a lot of attendance, no, sir.
Is there a difference? So, everybody's seen inside of a police vehicle, where there's typically like an AR-15 and a shotgun. Is a patrol and SWAT rifle different from that?
No, sir. That would be the patrol and SWAT rifle.
Okay. What is, or what previously has the robotic platform been used for?
So, when it's used, it can enter a building and give us basically eyes and ears into an area and kind of check it out for us, so we don't have to go in there personally. So, make sure that we're keeping ourselves safe, make sure that we're keeping the member of the public safe, and then getting eyes and ears in the area.
Does the robotic platform have any sort of ammunition or pepperball or anything like that on it?
No, it doesn't have any weapons whatsoever.
Just eyes and ears?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you again for the presentation and for the work that the Escondido Police Department does, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have been receiving all, I think this is like three years in, right, this law? So, I'm very familiar with it, familiar with it before it became a law, and I will say that I appreciate this annual report that you all give, because it's about transparency and also knowing what kind of equipment officers use, how they use it. It also goes into depth as to, you know, who's responsible for what, who's trained on what, what kind of training do you receive? So, it's very transparent, and that's a good thing for the community. I did attend the very first, three years ago, meeting that you did, that the Police Department did, and there was a few more community members there. And I just want to say that I was very appreciative of the equipment actually being there, where you could actually see it and touch it with, you know, supervision, of course. And you just learn a lot, and I think the name of military equipment, you know, people, I assumed scarier stuff, and it wasn't necessarily that. So, these are not things that the military is using, to my understanding, so even the name kind of is like a misnomer, but I still, again, appreciate the transparency, and I don't know what other cities do, but I feel like we go above and beyond what I would normally expect, and, you know, I'm, you know, not easy to please. I have very high expectations, and you all just really, I think, do a really great job with this. And I like how this staff report has like the what we do have, what we don't have. I don't recall if we've had that in the past. That doesn't stand out to me, but I appreciate that being here now, and I appreciate that you spelled out the new changes that you've made since the last one. What is the chemical agents, what are the chemical agents? Can you share more about that? That one doesn't ring a bell, as, you know, I don't know if that's something new that we carry now, or maybe it just wasn't in the staff report in the past.
Yeah, so that would be any munitions that is meant to deliver any sort of chemical agent, that would be like an irritant, so tear gas, CS guys, OC, things of that nature.
Got it. Okay. And then, have we acquired any new equipment that we didn't have like the year before or in previous years? Any new tools, equipment that we're using now that we haven't used in the past?
No.
Okay, I thought so. You probably would have included any of this, but I needed to ask. Um, what else? Yeah, that was pretty much it. I think you did a thorough job on the, um, staff reports, so kudos to all the the staff to work on this. And I definitely encourage the public to attend, um, one of these meetings, um, because our police officers are there. You can actually see the equipment, um, and they will provide all the information. And it's just for me very informative, knowing that, you know, our, um, police officers are trained properly. Um, and, you know, just the different scenarios that they would use these equipment for is very educational. So again, like, I'm really big on transparency, so I I really appreciate this report and I look, and I look forward to it every year. Thank you.
I remember when it came for the first time, uh, we had quite a bit of a healthy discussion. And, uh, it was great that there was, I think, if I remember correctly, about fifty community members at the first one. And there, and the response was very positive. It wasn't what I thought it was going to be. And what Councilmember Martinez just said regarding being able to see it and touch it, of course, with the proper supervision there, uh, was very, uh, helpful for the community. So I want to believe that no community showed, because it's advertised the same way, uh, not, didn't show up because they feel comfortable. They understand now a lot better what this is about. It is a misnomer to to, uh, maybe not a misnomer because it is military equipment, but it provides a lot more, uh, it'll raise a lot of red flags. What does that mean? It's military. But the clarity that there are no ammunitions or nothing like that on on this, I think, is wonderful. So thank you for that. Have there been any complaints regarding the equipment?
No, we have not received any complaints regarding any of the four eighty-one equipment.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there a license required for the drone operators?
So the drone operators have to go through a course testing and then be approved by the FAA.
By the FAA, okay, wonderful. Is there a difference, uh, between a civilian drone and a military drone? Or are they basically the same?
And just for clarification on my end, when you're saying military drone, are you saying the the military equipment as laid out in AB four eighty-one?
Correct.
Uh, minimal. Uh, there are some that we we get that are basically the same types that civilians can buy. Uh, and then there are some companies that sell ones that they've built specifically for law enforcement, but to the best of my knowledge, we don't have any of those ones.
Okay, thank you for that. And, uh, I don't remember if it was last year or the year before that, the a video we saw was, uh, of a bank being held up on East Valley Parkway. Uh, and how helpful it was for the drone to provide video for officer safety, community safety, making sure that they could see, that police could see a wide array of area, keeping all resident or all, any, any, any personnel or any person around there. Have the department noticed any difference in time when, uh, people realize that they're being watched? Uh, from the very beginning, where they're hiding, they're not really hiding to a shorter period of time, a longer period of time before they give up, something like that? Or less resistance?
You know, I I don't have an exact stat on that, unfortunately. Uh, what I can say is is my personal experience, anecdotally, it basically allows us to slow everything down, get those eyes on and and work the problem at a pace that's safe for everybody. So I I can dig into that and get you more information, but off the top of my head, I don't have specific stats.
Yeah, I didn't expect any specific things, just kind of what what is the feeling? But pretty much of those are all the questions that I have. Thank you very much. I appreciate it and I also always look forward to this report. It's, uh, I I think good for the community to be informed.
Thank you for your work. Uh, excellent reporting and it's good to know how our equipment's being used. And with that being said, I want to make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, we shall vote.
Voting is up. Motion approved, four zero.
All right, thank you both for your time and for the presentation and information. We are going to move on to item twelve, which is a short form rent increase application for Greencrest Mobile Home Park. And just for the heads up to this, the council, I've turned the request to speak mode back on. And we'll go ahead and open this public hearing. Time is yours. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Rent Review Board. My name is Carlos Cervantes and I am the Housing and Neighborhood Services Management Analyst for Mobile Home Parks. And with me is Coach Compliance Officer Stephen Jacobson. And for your consideration this evening is a short form rent increase application for Greencrest Mobile Home Park. The board is asked to receive this presentation, hear public testimony, and make a determination concerning the rent increase request in accordance with the factors set forth in the Escondido Mobile Home Rent Control Ordinance and the Mobile Home Rent Review Board Guidelines. The staff is recommending approval of the short form mobile home rent increase application and adoption of the Rent Review Board Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash fifty-three. On June eighth nineteen eighty-eight, the Escondido residents voted to approve Proposition K to enact mobile home rent control in the city of Escondido. Under Prop K, if a park owner wants to increase the rent of a mobile home rent control space, they must file an application within the city to obtain approval from the Mobile Home Rent Review Board. In nineteen ninety-seven, the board adopted changes to the Mobile Home Rent Review Board Guidelines to allow acceptance of a short form application. This short form is an abbreviated and less administratively burdensome application process for park owners and city staff. Through a short form application, a park owner can request a rent increase based solely on the change in San Diego Metropolitan Area's Consumer Price Index, or CPI, versus a long form that takes several factors into consideration, including change in CPI, local rent comparisons, capital improvements, changes in property tax, changes in utility costs, changes in operating and maintenance expenses, and the amount and quality of services provided by the applicant to the affected tenants. In order to be eligible for a short form, a park must have waited at least twelve months since the last rent increase application was deemed complete. The park owner's request must apply to one hundred percent of the rent control spaces in the park. And the requested increase may not exceed ninety percent of the increase in CPI since the last application was granted by the board or eight percent of the current rent, whichever is less. So, Greencrest Mobile Home Park is an all age park with a hundred twenty-nine spaces and a hundred fifteen of them subject to rent control. Their last increase was approved on April first, twenty twenty-four, and the average increase at that time was twenty dollars and forty-five cents, or three point eight seven percent of the current rents. Here are some pictures of the amenities offered at the park. They have a large clubhouse with a kitchen area and a laundry facility as well. There's also a swimming pool, a seasonal swimming pool for resident, for residents as well. And in addition, there is a clothesline for residents to hang dry their laundry. And there's also a large enclosed court that can be used for indoor soccer or other recreational activities. And located right next to this is a dirt space with picnic tables as well. So here's a summary of the park's request. This request covers a twelve month period of consideration. As I said before, the last approved increase was April first, twenty twenty-four, with an average increase of twenty dollars and forty-five cents per space per month. The park is currently requesting the maximum allowable increase of ninety percent of the change in CPI, which equates to two point oh nine percent. The average rent control space currently is six twenty-nine and seventy-three cents. The average requested increase is seventeen twenty-one, with an increase ranging in ten thirty-six to twenty-two oh seven. The resident meeting was held on April fourteenth at six P M. Individual notices were sent out to each resident affected by this request, notifying them of the rent increase application, the resident meeting, and the public hearing date. Six residents attended the meeting along with park manager, city staff, and there were no representatives identified at this meeting. At the meeting with the app, at the meeting, the application and short form hearing procedures were reviewed with the residents. One resident commented that the park is great and the neighbors are overall very friendly. She expressed that the park rent increase was acceptable and noted that the lack of attendance at the meeting suggested that other residents felt the same. A second resident asked if the city could provide communication through email rather than by mail. Finally, another resident emailed city staff stating that limited resources for elderly and stating limited resources for elderly and mentioning that they do not see the return on investment at the park for the increase that's being requested. At this time, I'll turn it over to Stephen to cover the code enforcement compliance, code enforcement inspection.
Good evening, council. On April fourteenth, a lighting inspection was performed by Code Compliance Division. One lighting violation was identified with the exterior light in front of the pool storage being in disrepair. On April fifteenth, an inspection of the common area was conducted by Code Compliance Division and Park Management. Three general park violations were identified. The park address was not posted on the park sign at the street or at the office. There was also overgrown tree branches and encroaching into the roadway by spaces thirty-one and one twelve. A notice was mailed to the park manager and the owner informing them of the violations. According to the Mobile Home Rent Review Board Guidelines, no increase granted for any park shall go into effect until any existing code violations are corrected. A reinspection was conducted and on May fifth, twenty twenty-five, all violations were corrected.
Thank you, Stephen. So this application meets eligibility criteria for submission of a short form rent increase request. Staff recommends approving the application and adopting Rent Review Board Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-three, granting an increase of ninety percent of the change in CPI, which is two point eight oh nine percent, and equals an average increase of seventeen twenty-one per space per month. This concludes the presentation and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. We'll hold off on the questions and and move to, uh, park representative. They're here. You have ten minutes. The time is yours.
Members of the Rent Review Board, you know me, I'm Jim Yance, and I don't need to take the whole ten minutes unless you'd, uh, like to ask some questions. We do thank you for, uh, consideration in this matter.
If that is all you have, then I will move to the resident representative and after public comments, we we may call you back up for questions.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a, no representative of the residents was designated for this particular, um, rent increase, but we do have one member of the public who submitted a request to speak for him. And it's Anna Frutos. And I did want to let you know that, uh, we did receive a request right before the council meeting that an individual wanted to speak in Spanish as a part of a public comment. The city does have a policy that provides language assistance to be able to translate, but that needs to be submitted in advance of the meeting forty-eight hours. We were unable to secure that due to the late notice. Just wanted to let you know.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Anna Frutos y estoy aquí porque soy residente del parque de Greencrest desde el dos mil diecinueve. Uh, cuando nosotros tuvimos un contrato con ellos para vivir ahí, nuestra renta estaba en seiscientos cincuenta dólares por el piso. Obviamente más aparte el pago de la tráiler, ¿verdad? Entonces ahora han estado, este, haciendo esta proposición del aumento. Nosotros somos una familia de clase trabajadora. A nosotros nos afecta estos incrementos porque todos los, todos los gastos básicos en una familia han estado incrementando y esa es la razón por la que yo vengo a expresarme en que no estoy de acuerdo en que haya un incremento en el costo de la renta. Es todo. Buenas tardes.
A vivir ahí, in what year did you go, uh, did you move in?
Dos mil diecinueve.
El dos mil diecinueve, two thousand nineteen. Thank you.
No further public comments on this item.
Okay, um, I actually don't have any questions at this point, so I'll turn it over to my colleagues if anybody has anything. Deputy Mayor?
Slowly because it makes a noise. Um, thank you, uh, for the information. Um, quick question, just in the, um, staff report regarding the resident meeting. It mentioned a question about a resident asking if the city could provide communication through email. From what I understand, um, the city communicates through the, to the mobile home park. Um, what is the, can someone remind me the process of how, um, the resident meeting is advertised? Is that the city that does it or is it the park that's responsible for, um, mailing out notices to all the residents? So if someone can just explain kind of what's the process for notification to the residents about the resident meeting?
I can answer for that. Oh, sorry, thank you, council member. Uh, so for that, it's on city staff. We'll send out letters in the mail to residents, letting them know about anywhere from two to three weeks ahead of time that there will be a resident meeting held. And then from there, we also let them, we send them follow up, uh, letters in the mail, letting them know about the council meeting as well, just in case if anybody wants to come speak. But the resident meeting itself is advertised to that one letter and then as well as park management letting the residents know as well.
Okay, got it. But we don't actually have, um, so we have mailing addresses for the residents because we know how many units exist in the, um, so we, that's an easy thing to know, correct?
Correct, yeah. All the mailing addresses that we have are provided by the park when they submit the application. They'll send, uh, labels with the residents that we, that we're supposed to mail out to.
Got it, okay. Um, for the park, um, manager or, do you all have email address? Do you communicate with your residents by emails? And if so, do you notify them by email about the resident meeting and is that something that you would be amenable to?
Uh, well, we currently don't do that. We have email residents for some of our residents. Uh, the difficulty with email is people change their email addresses.
Right.
And, uh, you you think you're communicating and then it bounces back to you or they never got that too. When it's mailed to their home address, you know that somebody living in space one uh, has an address to them at space one. That's the the best way.
I understand. Yeah, that makes sense. I I figured, especially because, you know, it it's having updated information. And then if a tenant moves out, then, you know, one, one renter might have, or that one tenant might have, um, an email and the other one might not. So it does get complicated and I think the written, um, mail, you know, people should check their mail. But yeah, that's the probably the most secure way to get. I mean, I was just wondering what kind of additional, you know, notification methods, um, were used? And if they ever received an answer at that meeting or?
We tend to find, because I've been doing this for twenty-five years here in Escondido and, uh, the residents talk to each other as well. There's off times that people come to the meeting because their next door neighbor mentioned that there was something. And as you you had asked about, uh, people not showing up for the military equipment meeting, uh, the tendency is people show up when they're upset about something.
Right.
So if they're not upset about the bazookas, they're okay and same with with rents.
Thank you. And did you know if someone did respond to that question in the meeting that did get answered? About the email?
About the email, yes, it was, uh,
Addressed?
It was addressed that
Thank you.
that that was a difficult thing to do.
Got it, makes sense. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure, you know, I like when people get answers to the questions. Um, and just one thing, um, I'm going to say this in English and Spanish and we're able to respond because it's an agenda is coming. Um, para la persona que habló, Anna creo su nombre. Normalmente ese proceso que hacemos es, um, para, para aumentar la renta basado en cada año, se sabe más o menos cuánto va a ser. Es algo que normalmente tenemos que aprobar porque si no, eso hace un proceso más largo donde posiblemente pueden preguntar por más. So hay diferencia de un short form y un long form. El short form es una manera de, es menos administrativo y es menos aumento a la renta. Si, um, por ejemplo, el parque decide de usar el proceso long form, eso les da, um, autoridad de pedir más. So normalmente el short form, el proceso del short form es más conveniente para, para los, um, que viven en el parque porque es menos renta. Aunque nadie, a mí nunca me gusta decir sí, pero es algo que, es un proceso como administrativo que tenemos que, como un acuerdo, diciendo si no hay violaciones pueden pedir su aumento anual. So it's, it's the standard, ¿verdad? Es lo normal, lo que pasa. So sí, sí le entiendo y estoy de acuerdo con usted que es muy difícil y nunca me gusta a mí aprobar estos, pero es algo que normalmente hacemos por el acuerdo y un proceso más justo que es menos aumento en la renta. And I will just sum up what I said in Spanish and English. I'm explaining to the resident that spoke in Spanish that the short form versus a long form rent increase process. The short form is a much less administrative process that guarantees the park management, you know, kind of a fixed cap on, on a rent and it's usually more in benefit to the resident because it's, it's a smaller rent increase versus the long form process is long. It's expensive and usually the park owner will request a much larger rent increase. So in the long run, it tends to be more favorable outcome to the, to the residents. And I mentioned that I'm not a fan of saying yes to rent increases, but it's kind of like an understanding that if there are no violations, that is the kind of expectation in most cases. So while it's not fun to do that, I just was explaining the pros and cons to the two and kind of how it normally goes is, you know, it's, it's a process that has been done in order to kind of be, I think, the best outcome for both parties and less bureaucratic and if that's a, yeah, but less bureaucratic, I think. And less, and not as costly. So thank you. That's all the questions I have. No other concerns or questions and gracias por venir a hablar. I appreciate that. Okay.
Councilman Garcia?
My mic was off, so I couldn't call you back, but I was like, don't leave. In the past, when you've been here, you have presented as management for the park for, in situations where there was an economic issue for residents, that there was some form of assistance.
Yes, the park itself has an assistance program. It's generally designed to help people that have had some traumatic situation. As you know, I manage Carefree Ranch Mobile Home Park. We have seniors there. You have a couple living in a home. One of them passes and suddenly they're reduced to one social security check. And our park owner can look at that and say, hey, this, this is somebody who's lived in our park for fifteen years. We don't want to lose them or have them lose their home and we'll do something to help them. Generally, that's while they're trying to get assistance from other places. But I've had people, gosh, a lady that had a kidney transplant couldn't work anymore. So she got assistance from, still getting assistance from the park because of that. So that's available on all our properties. There, we asked that they have already applied for section eight. I think most assistance programs are like that. We also try to help them find other assistance programs that might be available. Call two one one, et cetera, to help, so.
Let me go ahead and share that in Spanish. Hice la pregunta acerca de la, en previas presentaciones, el caballero había mencionado de ayuda financiera que se proveía en situaciones especiales. Que si esta era la situación en el parque que, de la cual usted está hablando. Entonces él nos indica que hay diferentes programas y situaciones en las cuales se presentan que puedan este pedir y ellos dirigirlos o inclusive tomar este la, el análisis de que si pudiera haber algún apoyo. Entonces yo simplemente al público, ¿verdad?, en respeto al público, le dejo saber que si hay alguna necesidad pueden acercarse con la oficina de manejo de manejamiento para poder precisamente hablar de su situación particular. So I'll just summarize what I said, that you had been here before and you had explained to us that there were some financial assistance programs or you could also point in certain directions, residents that had some kind of a need that it could be analyzed by, by management and that if there was any particular need to go ahead and, and approach management to see if there was something that could be done. And I just made a general comment to, to everyone in order to be aware of that possibility.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else before?
Okay, with that being said, I will go ahead and move to approve resolution number RBR twenty twenty-five dash fifty-three and ask for a second. All right, if there's no other discussion, we'll vote.
Voting is open. Motion approved, four zero.
That takes us to our next short form rent increase application for Eastwood Meadows Home Park.
Hello, council members again. My name is Carlos Cervantes and I am the Housing and Neighborhood Services Management Analyst for Mobile Home Parks. With me is Code Compliance Officer Stephen Jacobson. And for your consideration this evening is a short form rent increase application for Eastwood Meadows Mobile Home Park. The board is asked to receive this presentation, hear public testimony and make a determination concerning the rent increase request in accordance with the factors set forth in the Escondido Mobile Home Rent Control Ordinance and the Mobile Home Rent Review Board Guidelines.
I need a, I need to interrupt for a moment. I just have a question because I live in the park right next to that park. And the, it used to be, as I understand, it's no longer the same owner, but I want to confirm that it's not the same owner, otherwise I need to recuse myself.
It is not the same.
Acceptable?
Yeah, and I guess her from Jim.
All right. Thank you. Sorry about the interruption.
Oh, no worries. So the staff is recommending approval of the short form mobile home rent increase application and adoption of a rent review board resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two. On June eighth, nineteen eighty-eight, the Escondido residents voted to approve proposition K to enact mobile home rent control in the city of Escondido. Under Prop K, if a park owner wants to increase the rent of a mobile home rent controlled space, they must file an application with the city to obtain approval from the Mobile Home Review Board. In nineteen ninety-seven, the board adopted changes to the Mobile Home Review Board Guidelines to allow for acceptance of a short form application. The short form is an abbreviated and less administratively burdensome application process for park owners and city staff. Through a short form application, a park owner can request rent increase based solely on the change in San Diego Metropolitan's Area Consumer Price Index or CPI versus a long form that takes several factors into consideration, including change in CPI, local rent comparisons, capital improvements, change in property tax, change in utility costs, change in operating and maintenance expenses and the amount and quality of services provided by the applicant to the affected tenants.
I don't want to throw off your groove here, but if you would like to skip the parts we just heard, that would be totally acceptable.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, so we'll skip on, pass this and we'll just get on to the park information itself. Eastwood Meadows Mobile Home Park is an all age park with one hundred twenty-nine spaces and one hundred twenty-six subject to rent control. Their last rent increase was a long form application approved on November first, twenty twenty-three. This included an average permanent rent increase of thirty-four dollars and forty-eight cents per month, a temporary rent increase for capital improvements of ten dollars and fifty-seven cents per month for a period of fifteen years and an additional temporary rent increase for reimbursement of application fees of ten dollars and twenty-two cents per month for a period of three years. Here, excuse me, here are some pictures of the amenities offered at the park. They have a gym area with plenty of outdoor activities such as a playground, dog park and exercise court. There's also a seasonal swimming pool and year-long clubhouse and residents also have access to an on-property self car wash as well. And here we can see a summary of the park's requests. The request covers a twelve-month period of consideration. The park is currently requesting the maximum allowable increase of ninety percent of the change in CPI, which equates to two point two five percent. The average rent control space is currently seven hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. The average requested increase is sixteen dollars and twenty cents with increases ranging from eight dollars and ninety-three cents to twenty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. The resident meeting was held on April seventh at six P M. And individual notices were sent to each resident affected by the request notifying them of the rent increase application, the resident meeting and the public hearing date. Twenty-nine residents attended this meeting along with park manager and city staff. The park representative is Ernest Kubian. At the resident meeting, city staff provided residents with a history of Prop K and their short form application review process. Code compliance was also able to detail, to give residents details of the areas they will be inspecting as well as reiterating what types of violations fall under this inspection, which are health and safety code violations, not aesthetic concerns. Residents asked for clarification as to what the increase was based off of, to which city staff clarified that it will be solely based off of the CPI percent requested by the park management. Residents made concern with park management regarding water billing, trash and, trash and street sweeping and improved security at the park. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Stephen to go over the code compliance inspection.
On April seventh, a lighting inspection was performed by code compliance division. No lighting violations were identified. On April eight, an inspection of the common areas was conducted by code compliance division and park management. Six general park violations were identified. There were overgrown tree branches and vegetation encroaching into the roadway by spaces thirty-three, thirty-four, sixty-seven and eighty. There's also no access to drainage pipes underneath the laundry room sink. And the final violation was for a laundry room lighting that was in disrepair. A notice was mailed to the park management and the owner informing them of the violations. According to Mobile Home Rent Review Board Guidelines, no increase granted for any park shall go into an effect until any existing code violations are corrected. A reinfection was conducted and, and as of April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, all violations were corrected.
Thank you, Stephen. So this application meets eligibility criteria for submittal of a short form rent increase request. Staff recommends approving the application and adopting the rent review board resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-two, granting an increase of ninety percent of the change in CPI, which is two point two five percent and equals an average increase of sixteen dollars and twenty cents per space per month. This concludes the presentation and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Is there a representative for the park here? You have ten minutes if you'd like.
Honorable mayor, council, my name is Ernest Kubian and I was.
And Ernest, would you mind lowering your microphone? And we'll take the park rep after this.
Yeah, I was assigned by the residents to represent the park. Overall, in my communication with the park residents, they were all satisfied with the increase. There were only some questions regarding the utilities.
Can I ask a question just to clarify? Are you representing the park or the residents?
The renters.
Do we have a representative from the park here?
Jim is the park representative.
Okay, I will call on you next. Let's hear from the park representative first. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Members of the rent review board, I'm still Jim Yance. And Thompson Properties now manages Eastwood Meadows. So it's, it's its own individual LLC and separate from Mobile Home Park West next door for future reference. And I'd happily answer any questions you may have about this property.
We'll go through the same routine as last time. So thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Sir, the time is now yours. Sorry about that.
No problem. Yeah, well, once again, my name is Ernest Kubian and I'm a resident of Eastwood Meadows. And communicating with some of the residents, they all agreed to a rental increase was due. The only, the only problem, the only issue really is, you know, regarding the utilities during the last couple of years. Electric and gas meters have been installed at each unit and that is being handled by San Diego Gas and Electric. Now recently, the water was also being, water is being metered and that was assigned to the city of Escondido, which will be sending the bill to a company named Manage America who prepare their monthly statements for their residents. The main question that I have is regarding the sewage. Apparently, when I spoke with the manager, the sewage fees were charged as a flat rate to each individual owner. And that doesn't seem to be right. I mean, because you may use more water than I do. You know, well, the way that was discussed during that first meeting is how do we determine this sewage rate for the park or for each unit? And the way that some of the discussion went on is, you know, depending on the water that you consume in your, in your home, that could be used as a way to study and present the amount of sewage or the amount of water that is being discharged by home. And then with that will present a monthly fee or a monthly rate for the, for the particular unit. Because right now, the current fee for sewage is, is a flat rate of fifty-eight dollars sewer. Flat rate for everyone. And you know, like I said before, some of the, some of the homes, you know, have three or four or five occupants. Some only have one. Some have got trees and a garden. Some don't have a garden. So obviously the, the water usage varies between each one of them and that is being taken care of by the water meter. But now how do we take care of the sewage? Which is, I, I believe is going to be determined by the amount of water that, that each unit uses during a particular month.
I have a question. Is this under the purview of the rent review board or is that a question for utilities?
It really is a utilities question. It's the rates that we charge for the different classifications. What I heard from the resident was there was no dispute with respect to the rent increase, but there was kind of this ancillary question about the rates for sewer. So I think that it's a little bit different.
And I, I think we would love to get you an answer to that question and resolve the issue, but that would be more appropriate through the utilities department.
Okay.
And another question was regarding the weekly sweeping of the park. The manager decided to cancel that particular contract and, you know, we would like to at least see a monthly sweeping, not the weekly sweeping, a monthly sweeping. And if that could not be available, at least some sweeping contract during the fall because our park, we have a lot of trees and during the fall season, you know, we get a lot of that, debris discharged into the streets. That's basically it. Overall, the residents are quite happy with the rent increase.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Do we have any public comments on this one?
None.
Okay. You're welcome to come back up here, sir. I've got, I've got just a couple of questions because I actually, I highlighted the street sweeping and the, I guess my first question is, can street sweeping somehow be renegotiated back with the residents?
Okay, so maintenance in the park is addressing streets with leaves and stuff, so we're taking that in-house. One problem with street sweepers, particularly in small spaces, you get those big brushes and they start shooting rocks and stones and hitting people's houses and cars. So there are complaints about that that you can manage better.
Seems like a reasonable concern.
Yeah, so it's one of those things that we would probably reevaluate at some point and decide whether we need to do something more different, but for right now, we're, we're addressing it in-house. The sewer issue, just to comment on it, everybody is on a flat sewer fee. I'm not sure that we can assess that by water usage, but I'm going to ask that question of people at our organization, so.
Would appreciate that. The, the other concern in here that was mentioned was improved security at the park. Is that something that you can work with the residents on through this next year?
Yes, I, I think that's common for us to do that, so.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I'm going to ask the resident to come back up. So thank you, Mayor, you, and you could stick around too because I might have some questions for you. So thank you, Mayor, for addressing the questions that I have. A little more specific, you didn't mention security concerns in your comments, but it's mentioned in our staff report. Can you speak to what the security concerns are?
Well, I'm not aware or informed of any security problems.
Thank you for doing that.
The only thing that was presented by me at that meeting was that we requested some type of a bumper on the streets, not necessarily a large. Not necessarily a large bumper to reduce speed traffic.
Oh, okay.
You know, what I suggested was, you know, you've seen it sometimes on the highways where the street is just marked just enough to let the driver know that, ba-ba-ba-ba, there's something, slow down. Because, you know, it is a family park, and nowadays, you know, some of those families also have pets. And, you know, and there'd been an issue, in fact, just about two weeks ago, one, I don't know if it was a resident or a visitor, that actually crashed into a resident's car. So, I mean, if we can get, you know, a few years ago, I made that request also. At that time, we were informed that the fire department was not willing, was not agreeing to that because that was causing problems for the speed at which the fire department can move in an emergency. But in the meanwhile, I've noticed bumpers or street bumps in some of the other parks. So I don't see why, in fact, Mobile Park West has a bump guard at the entrance to the park. And I don't see why we couldn't have some type of a sort of a warning, you know, at least at the beginning of the park that would slow the drivers, reduce the driver's speed. But, you know, other than that, I don't know the other guns.
No, thank you, because it wasn't, it just said improved security, but there was no specifics, and that could be many things. So that's why I wasn't sure what it was related to, but it sounds like possibly traffic. But I think these resident meetings are great opportunities for residents to voice concerns. And although some might not be in the purview of us, it opens the door for a conversation. So I just think it's good that residents attend the meetings and communicate with the park owners and hopefully work together to solve some of these issues. So I encourage the residents to get involved and communicate with the park owners and see what you all can do together. One thing to, let's see here. I have this question, and I know it's a little, I don't want to get too in this because I know it's not necessarily within the Rent Review Board, but I'm hoping that you will follow up on the water thing. So since there's been a change in ownership, did that, was the change to going to water individualized, you know, meters, was that a decision made with the new park owner? Or is, can you explain a little bit of like that would cause that and what was the issue before?
A good deal of it is water conservation. When you just say, use all the water you want, you're not going to get a bill for it. If you got a runny toilet, what do you care? So the idea is that people can see what they're using, pay for what they're using, and this gentleman's not paying for, you know, somebody else's water usage because it's all lopped into one big pool.
Okay, but that helps me understand it was a decision made by the new park owner. And yeah, I would, I would look into, for the resident, look into, you know, that with the utilities and if you could facilitate helping him get answers to that. I think, you know, sometimes, you know, things can be improved on.
Yeah, and I'm just not certain of an answer, or I would tell you it can or it can't, but I'll find out.
And I know sometimes too, just, it's always good to double-check things because there's multiple units in that, in the park. It could be, it could trigger a different rate because there's, you know, how it's being, what category of residential it's in because of the number of units. So that might trigger a different rate. But again, it's just worth exploring. I'm encouraging the conversation and exploring and reaching out to our utilities department.
We have a very open-door policy at our parks, which I think you've come to know. So we don't have a lot of people showing up at meetings because they can walk into our offices or call anytime and say, I have an issue, or can you look into this? And we address those things as best we can. And I think that keeps us with happy residents who like living where they live.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just comment on it too, because, you know, twenty-nine residents is a lot for these meetings, but I'm happy that you all chose a resident rep because sometimes there is no resident rep. So thank you for being involved and for stepping into the role of being resident rep. That is all. I'm glad the violations have been cleared. It looks like there wasn't any actual mention of like the increase, but more other issues. And I'm glad that you will be following up with each other and talking about those things. Thanks, that's all my comments.
Sir?
Street cleaning, it's a wonderful thing. For a time at my park, they got rid of it, and it was a noticeable difference. I don't know if they were trying to clean up on their own or not. But if you're able to work that out with the residents, I think it would be something wonderful. So I just wanted to chime in regarding that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. In addition to, well, it has nothing to do with the management.
Would you mind stepping up to the microphone?
Nothing to do with the management, but I've been communicating with the park managers. We have, many of our residents are disabled, low income. They have problems on their own to maintain their properties. So I spoke with the park manager about forming a volunteer group within the park, within our park, that can be accessed at times of needs, so we can help some of the residents that are not able to do for themselves. So I don't know if that requires some type of licensing or permit from the city or what.
I don't believe so. I think that's just an agreement that needs to be worked out with the park managers.
And we would be very happy to support that any way we could, so. And there are people in our parks, particularly, again, I manage a senior property. If somebody is too old, can't maintain, their kids, don't have kids, whatever, the park will take care of those things. We just need to know that there's an issue, and then we'll help address it.
You provide contact information because I think I have some people that may be willing to help with something like that, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to know about that, too, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm a church pastor, right? So I have church members that always say, hey, pastor, can we help? So I've been looking for something, so here we go. Anyway, I'll be quiet now.
Thank you for this. I have just one thing. I have experience with this regarding the utilities. I'm not sure if you already have, but it's worth looking into. We're talking about the amount of people or utilities that might be disproportionate. Well, I've implemented in the past is Ratio Utility Billing System. It's called RUBS. So if you haven't looked into it, it might be something to explore with RUBS, Ratio Utility Billing System. So it might be something to look into.
I will make note of that. Thank you.
And I would like to make a motion to approve the recommendation from our staff. Thank you all.
I'll second that. And if there's no other comments or questions, let's vote.
Motion approved, four to zero.
Anybody else want a five-minute break? Let's take a five-minute break. All right, we'll go ahead and reconvene this meeting and move on to item fourteen, which is a user and regulatory fee study. Open the public hearing. Time is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council members. My name is Christina Holmes. I am the Director of Finance. This evening, I will, during this evening's user fee workshop, I'm going to share a bit of background on user fees, the adjustments that council approved on July 10th, 2024, the authorized Consumer Price Index adjustment, and then conclude with the staff recommendation and next steps. In 2023, the city engaged with a consultant to conduct an assessment of user fees, and the results of the study was presented to the city council on June 5th, 2024. Prior to that, a comprehensive user fee study was performed by a consultant back in fiscal year 2020. The consultant worked with city staff to examine the city's user fee schedule and make recommendations for updates. The study did not examine taxes, assessments, utility rates, or development impact fees, and primarily focused on these categories of fees listed in the table. That is building, current planning, engineering, fire prevention, and non-development-related fees such as administrative services and facility use rentals. The study showed that the annual cost to provide these services for the general fund was almost twelve-point-eight million dollars, and the annual fee revenue that the city was collecting was seven-point-eight million dollars, meaning the general fund was subsidizing these services by five million dollars annually. Based on feedback from the city council at the workshop on June 5th, two additional fee schedules were brought back to the city council on June 19th. At that meeting, city council directed staff to return with a fee schedule that is full-cost recovery for all direct benefit fees and to adjust recreation program fees to the top of the market or to full-cost recovery. Facility rentals were moved to full-cost recovery. That final fee schedule was approved at a public hearing on July 10th, and the updated fee schedule was effective September 15th, 2024, allowing for that sixty-day notice period. At the July 2024 public hearing, the city council also approved a resolution that authorized the city manager to adjust user fees annually based on the prior-year annual percentage change in the Consumer Price Index, known as CPI, as measured in San Diego County for a given year. So based on that data, the annual CPI adjustment for this fiscal year would be three-point-one percent. Using this inflationary factor, the projected annual revenue would increase by about two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars this upcoming fiscal year. The full-cost recovery model for fees was first implemented by the city this fiscal year, and the updated fees were not effective until September 15th of 2024. Because a full year of fees have not been collected under the new fee schedule, staff are recommending postponing that Consumer Price Index adjustment of three-point-one percent. Staff will return to city council with a full report on the user fees after a full year of data is collected, and staff have an opportunity to analyze the information that would be around October of 2025. And that concludes staff's presentation. Available for questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Do we have any public comments on this one? No? Okay, I don't have any questions. If the council does, anybody? Deputy Mayor?
No questions. Thank you for the information, but I do, I'm fine with staff recommendation. I know you're looking for direction, so I don't know if you need to vote. Okay, but yeah, I'm fine with waiting to have the full year of data and then holding off on the CPI adjustment.
I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I think that that is the general consensus.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the fiscal year 2024-2025 Third Quarter Financial Status Report. Time is yours.
Thank you again. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council members. My name is Christina Holmes, Director of Finance for the city. This evening, I will be presenting the financial report for the quarter that ended March 31st of 2025. The presentation will include the financial funds for the, financial results for general fund operating revenue, general fund operating expenses, and an update on the general fund reserve accounts. To provide some history on the budget and the information we're reviewing, we're in the third quarter of the operating budget that was adopted by the city council in June 2024 for the fiscal year that started July 1st, 2024. The budget direction given to Department HUDs for the formation of this budget was to submit line item budgets at the same level as the prior fiscal year. Increases in employee services were to be absorbed by reductions in maintenance and operations. In addition, departments were directed to prioritize the city council's essential services and recommend budget scenarios that support the three-year council priorities. As a result of departments minimizing their budgeted expenses and the additional actions listed on this slide, the proposed fiscal year 2025 general fund operating budget was closed without the use of reserve funds. These two tables show a comparison of actual general fund revenue and operating expenses to the budget amounts for this fiscal year. In addition to comparing the financial activity between years, we also look at the results for both revenue and expenditures through March 31st compared to the projected amounts to ensure the financial activity is still tracking with the adopted budget. The projected results are based on the past history of the timing of revenues collected and the historical expenditure activity. At the end of the third quarter, both general fund operating revenues and expenses are tracking close to the expected results, with revenue at sixty-four percent of the budget and operating expenses at seventy-three percent. Next, we'll look at general fund operating revenue. Sales tax is the largest general fund revenue source, at thirty-nine percent of the total budgeted amount, followed by property tax, other taxes, and charges for services. This chart shows the major categories of revenue collected through March 31st of 2025 compared to the revenue collected in the prior year through March 31st of 2024. Overall, operating revenue has increased by a little over six-point-six million dollars compared to March of last year. Each category of revenue has increased compared to the prior fiscal year, with the exception of sales tax revenue. In the next few slides, I'll review the details of each category of revenue. The city works closely with its sales tax consultants in projecting sales tax revenue. The forecast for fiscal year 2025 was provided by Avenue Insights and projected a decline of about four percent or two million dollars compared to the prior fiscal year 2024. The city is experiencing that slowdown compared to this time last year. Actual sales tax receipts are under the March 2024 amount by two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars, or a little under one percent. This trend is consistent with other jurisdictions. The statewide decrease in sales tax revenue over the same time period was a little over one-point-one percent. This is primarily due to a decrease in the price of gas compared to last year, as well as a decrease in holiday spending at brick-and-mortar stores or general retail. Property tax revenue makes up twenty-eight percent of total general fund revenue, an increase to by seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-ten dollars, or about three-point-nine percent compared to this time last year. The property tax that the county collects is based on one percent of the total assessed value of a property, and Escondido receives a percentage of the one percent. Under Proposition 13, annual changes in the assessed value are capped at two percent, but property value reassessments occur each time a property changes ownership. So those higher home prices have led to additional revenue. Other tax revenue makes up fourteen percent of the general fund and includes franchise fees, transient occupancy tax, and business license revenue, and combined have increased by eight-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-ten dollars compared to the prior year. The primary driver for the increases and decreases in this category of revenue is due to franchise fee payments. The city collects franchise fee revenues from San Diego Gas and Electric, cable companies conducting business within city limits, and Escondido Disposal Incorporated, or EDI. So last fiscal year, the city reported a decline in revenue. This was due to revenue, the Escondido Palomar Energy Plant, which was shut down for maintenance in the first two quarters of the calendar year of 2023. That resulted in zero electric emissions during this timeframe, and therefore, no revenue was received. The plant was fully operational again back in August of 2024, which is increasing franchise fee revenue this fiscal year compared to last fiscal year. Charges for services increased by two-million-three-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-forty dollars. This category of revenue includes paramedic fees, community service fees for recreational community activities, and charges for development-related services, which include engineering and planning fees. So during the prior workshop that we just held, in July 2024, we reviewed the city council approved a user fee schedule that set all direct benefit user fees to one-hundred percent full-cost recovery. Those direct benefit fees included building, planning, engineering, development, technology, fire prevention, and facility rentals. This category of revenue, as I mentioned, also includes the paramedic revenue charges. Adjustments to the emergency medical transportation fees were also approved by city council. That was in October 24th of 2024, and these new fees were effective January 1st of 2025. Intergovernmental revenue includes the RINCON Fire Services Agreement, state-manded cost claims, various grants, and revenue received from fire mutual aid reimbursements. Overall revenue has increased by one-point-one million dollars compared to the prior year. This increase is primarily due to- This increase is primarily due to reimbursements received from the California Office of Emergency Services. The city's fire department staff can be deployed to assist other state agencies with responses to fires, and other incidents in the California Office of Emergency Services reimburses the city for the time and the resources for the staff deployed. As of March two thousand and twenty-five, reimbursements of one million, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars have been recorded. The city receives lease and rental income from city-owned properties, such as the mall. Overall revenue has increased by ninety-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars compared to the prior fiscal year. This is primarily due to received from the Vineyard Golf Course. Revenue generated from permits and licenses increased by two million, forty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars compared to the prior fiscal year. Again, the building and permit fees were adjusted to full cost recovery effective September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Construction and development activity also continues driving building permit revenue compared to previous fiscal years. Fines and forfeitures make up one percent of total general fund revenue and represent fees collected for vehicle code fines, parking ticket fines, other court fines, code enforcement citations, and impound fees and make up one percent of total general fund revenue. Overall revenue has increased slightly by fifty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars compared to the prior fiscal year. Invest, or other revenue includes interest earned, other miscellaneous receipts, and has decreased by about eighty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars compared to the prior year. And again, makes up a little less than one percent of total general fund revenue. Next, we'll look at the general fund operating expenses. This table includes expenditures by major categories of expenses for the general fund departments as of March two thousand and twenty-five compared to the operating budget. The city continues to be impacted by a competitive labor market, and as a result of recurring vacant positions and long recruitment efforts, there are expenditure savings in regular salary and benefits through March two thousand and twenty-five, where regular employee services are only at sixty-seven percent of the total budgeted amount. However, the vacant positions have also increased to the overtime expenditures, which are now at one hundred and twenty-two percent of the amount budgeted. The increase in overtime expenses is projected to be offset by the savings in employee Moving to the general fund reserve balances. There are two reserve balances that have been funded by the general fund. The first is the Section one fifteen Pension Trust Fund, which was established in February two thousand and eighteen. When the fund was established, a funding policy for contributions was recommended and included the four years of annual successor agency redevelopment loan repayments, which was fully repaid in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. In addition, the general fund has contributed twenty, a little over twenty point seven million dollars since the fund was established. The balances of March thirty-first is thirty-five point eight million dollars, earning a one year rate of return, a little over five percent. In addition to the Section one fifteen Pension Trust, the general fund also has a reserve balance. This, the policy for this balance was established in December of two thousand and fifteen. The city council adopted a fund balance policy that adopted a target reserve balance of twenty-five percent of total general fund operating revenues. The balance was established in order to maintain adequate levels of fund balance. The goal is based on a risk-based analysis to mitigate current and future risks, adequately provide for cash flow requirements, and to fund one-time unanticipated expenditure requirements. Total general fund adopted operating revenue is one hundred and thirty-two million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, and twenty-five percent of that is a little over thirty-three million, thirty-three million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, ninety-eight dollars. So that concludes my presentation. The request is to receive and file the financial status report for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, third quarter, ending March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Do we have any public comments on this item?
None.
Okay. The only thing I have to say is thank you again for your time and for the presentation.
Thank you. I want to echo that. For those of you that are in the audience, this is, the amount of work that's done for this is tremendous, you know, being on the, on the subcommittee and, and looking at this. I mean, this is no small feat, and I mean, you presented it so, so concisely, so eloquently, that it seems like it's simple and it's really not. So just thank you so much for this work. Tremendous. Thank you so much.
I don't see anyone else in the queue, so we shall receive and file and move on to the next item. Thank you. The next item is our boards and commissions makeup interview, and I'll turn the time over to our clerk when he's ready.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I'm just going to pull up the presentation. It'll have the candidates' information on here. As we prepare for this, I just want to encourage the council. So we conducted interviews last week. These are makeup interviews. All these candidates notified me in advance that they weren't able to make it. So in that sense, we're going to move forward. After the meeting concludes, if you wouldn't mind sending me your recommended candidate list by maybe tomorrow would be great because the anticipation is to make appointments at next week's council meeting. So with that being said, our first candidate is from the Library Board of Trustees, and it's going to be Giselle Luvanos. Time is yours.
Was she given the format beforehand? Okay, perfect. Just wanted to make sure you're prepared.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor White, Deputy Mayor Martinez, and esteemed council members. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Giselle Luvanos. I'm a lifelong San Diegan who first moved to Escondido with my parents and siblings in two thousand and four. Over the past twenty-plus years, I have lived in and out of Escondido, always residing in San Diego County, and in two thousand and twenty-one, became a proud Escondido homeowner together with my husband, where we're happily raising our three kids, ages six, four, and three. I'm here tonight as a Library Board of Trustee candidate, but I'm also here as a passionate Escondido resident who shares a commitment to the library's mission of providing equal access to information and educational experiences that inspire learning. I've lived that work in my day job as the Senior Director of Communications and Marketing at Cal State San Marcos. I've spent the past twelve years in public higher ed, including ten years at San Diego State University, where I spent six years as the inaugural Director of Marketing and Digital Media, as well as four years as Director of Government Affairs and Communications for the institution's student government auxiliary. I have a bachelor's degree in journalism from SDSU, a master's in journalism with an emphasis in media management from the University of Missouri. And I strongly believe that my rich experience in marketing and communications, and particularly in an educational setting, my understanding of public administration and political acumen, my collaborative spirit, and passion for this community make me a great candidate to serve and provide valuable skills to support the board's efforts. I know the board does many things, including serving in an advisory capacity to this council, to the city librarian, the wonderful professional staff. The board is also tasked with moving forward the work outlined in the library's strategic plan and has some key focus areas, including being vocal and energetic advocates for the library and helping to generate public support and participation in programs. I have reviewed the latest library strategic plan for two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-seven. I've reviewed the latest annual report that's publicly available for the two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three calendar year, and the board's minutes as well that are publicly available from this calendar year. And I have deep passion and values alignment for this work. So it is such critical work, which leads me to my why. Why serve? Why now? First and foremost, my kids. I believe my six-year-old son is the library's biggest fan. He's checked out just about every Mo Willems book at the Escondido Library. It's probably one of the biggest joys of my life to watch an early reader develop and blossom. The library's strategic plan has specific goals and strategies tied to encouraging reading, supporting early literacy and education, and offering parent education programs and helping prepare children for kindergarten. That gets me excited. I want to be part of that. I want to support the implementation of the plan. My son will be completing kindergarten in June, but over the next three years, I will be raising two more kindergartners. Second, this is an exciting and critical time in the library's history. The ten million dollar grant supporting the renovation efforts, the temporary move to North County Mall, it's going to necessitate ongoing creative marketing and communication efforts so that the library doesn't lose its momentum that it's had related to participation and access. I know that strategic plan mentioned that that was like key challenge, you know, for the library, the need for information about the community, government, and services, especially as Escondido grows. And so when it reopens, it will be amazing. It will be better to serve the community, provided that the community knows about it. And so lastly, though there's a lot I could say on this topic, there are also strategic plan goals to promote multi-generational learning and support the Escondido economy. So workforce development, we talk about it a lot in public higher ed, is key for a thriving community. And when I think about my vision for Escondido, it's about fostering the ongoing growth of this community with engaged, successful citizens and residents. And so in closing, I'll just say that in some of my previous work with students, I had to train dozens of students, advisors, and board committee chairs on Robert's Rules and Parley Pro. I've helped students get excited about civic engagement and get involved in their communities, and now I feel it's time for me to do the same. I hope that I have shown you that I am passionate. I've done my homework. I've come prepared, and I would be honored to serve and build on the incredible work of past and present board members. So I thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, there we go. Okay. So the mayor, the mayor's computer and microphone are not working right now, so the next applicant? Oh, now it is. Okay, great.
Oh, that's fine. As long as the microphone works, this is good. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Who's the next one? You're up now.
Yes, my name is Charlene Vitarelli. I'm, I've lived in the Escondido, I've lived in the city of Escondido for over thirty years and in the area for longer than thirty-five years, probably around thirty-five years. In that time, I have always been a patron of the Escondido Public Library. It is one of my favorite city services. I, I think I decided to put a bid in to serve on the board because I have used this service for over thirty years. My children had library cards. We came to the library on almost a weekly basis. They were part of the preschool programs that the library offers and are now lifelong readers. We are all heaven readers in my family. I have a bachelor's degree in social work and a master's degree in sociology and some credits somewhere floating around in the ethers for a PhD in interpersonal communication. I worked for the county of San Diego for almost twenty years. I am retired. I have time to devote to this service and a particular interest in the library and its patrons. I am looking, I've been looking at the, the purpose or the guidelines of the Board of Trustees for the library, and it seems to me they kind of interface. They are the representative, seems to me, of the public and what the public is looking for and what services are provided by their library. I am, I possess a fair amount of interpersonal skills and an ability to listen, and I would like to think I'm a great advocate for the library. I don't think I have much more to say. I understand the role of the board is to interface between library staff and patrons and between council and patrons, and we bring concerns and requests to the city council. I'm honored to be considered for the board, and I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. I don't see anybody in my queue, so we appreciate your time and interview.
All right. Now we're going to move on to the Public Art Commission. We have one outstanding candidate remaining, and that is Leila Sackfield.
All right. Good evening, Mayor White, Deputy Mayor Martinez, council members, and my neighbors, staff and neighbors. Hold on a second. Let me get my little notes up here. So I am Leila Sackfield, and I'm a lifelong resident of Escondido. I raised along with my husband our three sons, and I want to just start by saying arts were instrumental in giving me the opportunity to be the first in my family to attend college, to travel and perform all over the world. I have not fist bumped Justin Bieber, however. And the arts have always not just, not just been a part of what I do, but really about who I am. It is, it is an integral part of my, my entire being. My relevant experiences, I've had a great deal of leadership experience in a variety of roles, including over thirty years as an educational leader in the Escondido Union School District, as in, in my role as a teacher, a leadership mentor, a coach, a principal of both Rock Springs, as well as the founding principal of Reedy Creek. I'm the current Chair of the Personnel Commission for the Escondido Union School District System, and I am the senior warden of my church, and I currently serve as the Chair for the California Center for the Arts Foundation. As the deputy superintendent, both of educational services and human resources, I've managed large multimillion-dollar budgets, managed large state and federal grants, and have actually written several myself. I helped lead the district through the pandemic, successfully negotiating with both unions to be one of the first school districts in the county to get children back into the classroom where they belonged, and I'm very proud of that. In addition, I have over a decade of experience as a board member of the San Diego Children's Discovery Museum, the Escondido Education Foundation, three years as a board member of California Center for the Arts Escondido, as I said, where I currently serve as the Chair. I'm also a member of MAGIC, and I have served as, on the Steering Committee for Measure I, helping to successfully pass that. My knowledge of boards and commissions, I have a lot of experience, obviously, with governance in all of the things that you just heard, but in terms of the Public Art Commission, I, I really understand what the role of advisory means. I think it's, it's as important to know what things mean and what things don't mean. So I really do understand the role of advisory, and I also know that this is, this commission is really rooted in public arts, reviewing and, reviewing and approving proposed artwork, developing methods for selecting and commissioning artists in public art, adding to the quality and scope and style of the art that's reflective of our community and the values that you all have presented and that the council presents, recommending the allocation of public funds, maintaining the inventory of public art, decommissioning, seeking grants, and educating the public, which would be an absolute strong suit of mine. The commission significantly impacts this community, the, the vision of the community, the, the feeling of the community, this sense of community, because our local artists are incredibly engaged, as we saw this past month for the Arts and Culture Month. So there are many things that they do. Escondido, for me, it's a city of endless possibilities, and it's rooted in tradition and it's rich in culture and diversity. And my hope is that we can begin to increase our communication within and outside the city to bring awareness to the county and beyond about all the wonderful things that make Escondido unique and desirable, and a great piece of that is our public art, as we've seen through Escondido Alley Art, the commissioning of the ability for our students to have murals at Washington Park, all of the wonderful things that we have been seeing. all of the wonderful things that we, um, have been seeing, really under the direction of the Public Arts Commission. I think they've done an amazing job. When that happens, our city's going to thrive well into the future. With the recent passage of method, mess, measure, I, we can begin to address some of the core city functions that we've needed to address, um, and, and helping to make it safe. But bring, and bringing in new business, though, is a lot easier when a city is viewed as not only a safe place, but a destination place, someplace worthy of visiting. Our beautiful valley is rich in that, and our downtowns, um, Escondido downtown and the Center for the Arts are all assets that focus us on that. Um, these collaborative efforts, along with local arts organizations, have inspired me to want to be involved. I've been described as a visionary and collaborative leader who believes service is the centerpiece of good leadership. I have decades of proven, um, volunteer service within this city, and I'm, I'm committed to this city like no other. With a deep commitment to inclusivity and strategic growth, I'll strive to foster strong partnerships between the artists, the educators, civic leaders, and ensure that arts remain accessible and impactful. I'm an information seeker, and I use active listening to ensure that all voices are considered before making decisions. My leadership is defined by thoughtful engagement.
Out of fairness to the other applicants, I've got to stop you there. Your time has expired. Um, and I don't see anybody in my queue, so thank you very much, Leila, for your interest in the public art commission.
Now we will move on. Uh, we had two additional candidates for the transportation commission who I do not see in the audience, neither Jonathan Day nor Bruce Roder. Uh, that being said, we will move on to the transportation as well as planning. Uh, Ms. Hatley has applied for both the Transportation Commission and the Planning Commission, and she'll come forward at this time. And you will have a few extra minutes since you're going to be able to speak to both.
Good evening. I'm Lori Hatley, and good evening to the Mayor White and Deputy Mayor Martinez and the rest of the council members. My term will be expiring on the Transportation and Community Safety Commission here in a month or so. I have served on the Traffic Commission for five years, the last two years serving as chair. I have enjoyed my time and thank you for the opportunity to serve. I have never missed a meeting, and I thoroughly investigate the agenda items prior to the discussions. It is important to receive feedback from the community, and staff is very thorough about this, presenting solutions for the involved issues. One recent issue brought to the commission by a resident on Gamble Lane involves Gamble being used as a shortcut and vehicles speeding through the area. We discussed several solutions to this, including a no-left turn from eastbound Lincoln to northbound Gamble and certain calming, traffic calming devices. I'm proud that effective solutions are usually implemented through this manner. As a former California Highway Patrol officer, I understand traffic flow patterns and traffic collision issues. I feel privileged taking my knowledge from this field and applying it to the commission. I also understand the importance of school, pedestrian, and bike safety, especially since we will see more and more bicycles with the onset and popularity of electric bikes. I'm also interested in promoting the timing of our traffic lights, so less time and gas is spent waiting for lights to change, especially at intersections with long wait times with left-turn arrows. And then, as mentioned, um, at this time, I would also like perhaps the council to consider me for the vacancy on the Planning Commission. I would like to take my experience from the Traffic Safety Commission and apply it to this important board. As a basically lifelong resident of North County and a ten-year resident in the city itself, I know the importance and relevance of this board. I know the board advises the city council on land use policy and planning matters, sometimes having final approval over this authority. Last night, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. I have to say the meeting was run very professionally, and the chair, Stan Wheeler, did an excellent job diffusing a situation when a member of the community was angry and started yelling at both the commission and the city employees and the audience when his appeal in a certain matter was denied. The commission was very professional during this entire process. So I just, I wanted to give them a plug. They just did a very good job. I was very impressed with them last night. Uh, my vision for Escondido through the Planning Commission would be to continue making Escondido an attractive, family-oriented community for all to enjoy. I would like to see the continued improvements promoting businesses on our very important asset, Grand Avenue. Also continuing what I call infill development is important in keeping people within walking distance or at least short driving distances to districts like Grand Avenue. For our more rural or outlying areas, I would like to see walking and bike paths and more parks and open space for our community to enjoy, especially when new developments are being considered before council. Thank you for your consideration, and I would like to know if anybody has any questions.
I do.
Perfect. Go ahead.
And I'm only asking, um, so I asked all the other applicants for Planning Commission the same questions. I want to be fair. So one of the, since you're applying for the Planning Commission, um, do you have a specific, um, project within the city that you're a fan of, that you think is a great project? And then is there any project in the city that you're not a fan of?
Well, I, I'm going to be a hundred percent honest with you. I was a little suspicious about the traffic circles on Grand Avenue. I was like, wait, are these going to work? But I went down there several times during the construction, and now that they're completed, and I really think they look good. Just overall, I think just Grand Avenue is just improving steadily. And I think that's our biggest asset, really, is attracting, you know, having Cruising Grand come back again in June. And the businesses there that just, um, really enjoy having Cruising Grand down there and having, you know, their businesses prosper because of events like that. I'm, really promote that, so.
Thank you, Lori, for your interest in your interview.
Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Was that the last interview?
That was.
Okay. Then before we move on, I just want to thank each and every one of the applicants for your expressed interest and the perspective board you applied for. Um, looking forward to working with some of you, so thank you. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add to a future agenda? And if not, we'll move on to council member subcommittee reports and start with Councilman Joe Garcia.
No reports at this time.
Okay. Other councilmen, Garcia.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so as always, I'm talking to different constituents throughout the city. Um, there was, um, we just recently did a boards and commission subcommittee, um, yesterday. Uh, so that was, that was, uh, well, productive. I think it's very conducive. I think we're heading in the right direction, um, in the city, uh, citywide. I think that's really it. As always, thank you to my community for the privilege of serving.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, yes. On Monday, I, I joined our Congressman Scott Peters, um, for a press, a press conference at Feeding San Diego to speak about, um, the federal proposed cuts to SNAP and other programs that support our local farmers and provide food for our communities. Um, so I encourage our constituents to reach out to their congress members um, in order to protect and ensure that we have SNAP, because Escondido has certain districts that have extreme poverty. And, um, we're one of the cities that has a lot of requests for food, and so this will directly impact our communities. And it's important that, that we save these kind of, um, um, you know, programs for our residents. So I was happy to participate in that. Um, this Sunday, I will be going to the Escondido Street Fair. Um, and also, we have, it's an annual event that the San Diego River Park Joint Powers Authority, which I serve a member, as a member on behalf of our city, as well as the, um, San Diego River Park Conservancy, they hold an annual, uh, volunteer appreciation party, so that is this Sunday. Um, and then I will also be offering a certificate of recognition to the executive director that just had her twenty-fifth anniversary with the organization. Um, and then lastly, I just want to say that, um, many of you may have known, um, Mr. Tom Cowan. He, uh, longtime resident of Escondido, he recently had moved to, to Vegas to be closer with family um, after battling, um, cancer, and unfortunately, he lost his battle to cancer, uh, this week. And so my condolences to Nancy, his wife, but, uh, Tom was just a very important community leader. Um, for those of you who know, he's, he was a veteran, but we used to have, there's an event in San Diego called Stand Down, which helps, um, mostly homeless veterans. And Tom was the person that said, we need something like this in North County. So it's because of Tom Cowan that we have a North County Stand Down event. So I felt it was important for the community to know of his passing and just remember the legacy that he left our community, and he will be dearly missed.
Okay, on Friday, before a long Sandag meeting, we had the Independent Taxpayers Oversight Committee selection. So I'm on a committee that selects the people for this committee. And what this committee does is provide an enhanced level of accountability for expenditures of transnet funds as outlined in the transnet ordinance and expenditure plan. Very important committee. If you have what you think might be relevant experience towards that, feel free to apply for the next round of selections. Um, and then this week, I had a boards and commission subcommittee where we went, we finalized the recommendations to the city council for the Citizens Oversight Committee. I don't know. Duties, bylaws? Okay, perfect. And that concludes my report. City manager?
Nothing to report.
Then this meeting is adjourned.